All right. Welcome to the May 26, 2020, special meeting between the Finance Committee and City Council. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Muldoon is currently absent.
All right. Thank you. So we'll -- I apologize. Let me pull up my agenda. Okay. We are moving into current business. All right. Let's go with item number one, the review of the proposed fiscal year 2021 operating budget. Dan, are you starting?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the Finance Committee. Here is Finance Director Dan Matusevich.
Hang on one second. Do we know how to get rid of the echo? Okay. That's much better. Okay. Go ahead, Dan.
Okay. We're just waiting for the PowerPoint. Here we go. So, thank you. This was a very challenging year, as everyone knows. So the overview today, you know, want to start off reassuring folks that we do have a -- despite the challenges, we do have a balanced budget. The initial budget gap was $33.2 million for fiscal year 2021, and it relies on budget balancing strategies that rely on a number of short-term tiered budgetary solutions. So the budget maintains current service levels. We continue our commitment to maintaining critical CIP infrastructure and aggressive payment schedule towards our unfunded liability. The budget is a placeholder and will be reviewing after our first quarter results, likely digging into some of the longer-term solutions starting July 1. So my COVID disclaimers, as we know, it dealt a sudden and significant blow to both local and national and global economies. We're in the early stages of administering financial first aid. The budget as proposed is an initial bridge to financial recovery, but it's not a long-term solution if the fiscal conditions persist past June 21. So this is GFOA, or Government Finance Officers Associations, kind of how to triage fiscal distress. Right now, you would notice we're in that bridging stage where we're assessing the extent of the problem and coming up with short-term solutions. But as I mentioned, starting July 1, we'll start a recovery planning effort, and that will be more -- allow us more time to assess the extent of the problem, as well as take more deliberate actions that will produce more long-term savings as well to get us back on the road to recovery. So the short-term solutions that I talked about are, very simply, there's some from M&amp;O, there is a hiring freeze, or, you know, controlled vacancy, there's some deferred capital spending and deferred capital funding, as well as savings plan reduction and a contingency reserve. So the most important thing on this slide is to notice our actual revenues for 1819 were $229 million. You could see that the revised budget, things were looking good for a while, and included $229 million in revenues. That was a revised budget for 2019-20.
That's the actual, Dan, remember? 1819 actuals came in.
1819 is actual. The 219 is the revised budget for 2019-20. And then you could see it continued to slip for fiscal year 2021. And what you -- the most important number on here is, again, as we started to formulate our budget, we had a $33.2 million gap, and we proposed a number of solutions, starting with the green, which have the least service impact and most immediate financial savings to the city. Tier two is the hiring freeze. We talked about the deferred capital. We reduced some savings plan to internal service funds. And if you notice that cumulatively, we did draw a little bit on our contingency reserve, but we have a plan in place that addresses the full 33.2, and that still -- that would be for taking on any service level cuts. And so, again, it's important to note that we have a balanced budget through the number of those actions that we -- those tiered actions that we described, and that we -- so we're not operating in a deficit, and we still are maintaining a $50.3 million contingency reserve, which is only slightly under our target. So we're about 24%, whereas our target policy is about 25% of operations.
Okay. So let's go back to Slide 6. So our Finance Committee members will recall this past Finance Committee meeting, we were struggling to make sure that we were explaining the difference between the expenses and the revenues and where we would be finding the difference. And I think that it's important to just stop for just a moment, and because we're all going to be asked, I think, at some point at the council level to explain how we are reaching a balanced budget this year, and I'd like to just make sure I talk that through just a little bit, so that anyone who's listening right now can have a basic understanding. And then I want to make sure that our Finance Committee members, who, you know, we were wrestling with this at our last Finance Committee, have seen what we're trying to explain through this slide and the next two slides as well. Normally, when we're looking at our general fund, the one that we often look at is our operating revenues. And so it's worth remembering, you know, the operating revenues as, for the most part, your general fund revenues. Those are the ones we expect to see. Those are the ones we see from property tax, sales tax, TOT, and then a substantial amount of what we kind of call miscellaneous. But the miscellaneous is, you know, it's fairly substantial still. So when we see a drop in revenue of those major three sources, and then as well as fees and whatnot, you're still going to see, you know, you're going to see a pretty substantial drop, and seeing a $30 million drop is very substantial. And then what you're also going to see are the transfers in, and this is where it gets a little tricky -- not tricky, this is where it gets a little bit -- I couldn't even -- I couldn't help myself using that word, could I? That's so funny. This is -- that was a joke at the last Finance Committee meeting, so this is where it gets a little convoluted, and this is why it's important to remember why we were doing what we were doing with the capital improvement program at the last City Council meeting. Because what we do is we don't just buy things based on cash on hand and hope that our revenues come in year over year. We set aside a substantial amount of money into a substantial number of funds, and the idea being that sometimes we kind of -- it's sometimes sort of a rainy day fund, but often always, especially for our public works projects, we need to make sure the money is there when we need to actually do the project. So this is why we spend a lot of time, especially at the Finance Committee, but certainly at council as well, talking through the facilities financing plan and the facilities maintenance plan, and any number of funds and plans to make sure that we have the money when they come in. And so what we do is we set aside money into our, you know, harbors and beaches capital master plan as well. We set aside money year over year to try to make sure that we're phasing the cap -- the money in, so that the money is there when we need it for those capital projects. And we do so, just so everyone knows, I mean, we already are technically setting aside money to replace this building that we're in right now. It will take a very long time for us to get there, but we are, in theory, setting aside money now for this. But so I was trying to figure out a way of explaining this. So let's say you wanted to get a new car next year, and you think, okay, so a new car, the one that I would like, is about $40,000, and I'm going to spend it over -- I'm going to save up over the next 10 months. You should be saving about $4,000 a month for the next 10 months. But let's say that you're five months in, and you decide, you know, I don't need a new car for another year. That means that you don't have to spend -- you don't have to set aside as much out of your paycheck each month to make sure that you're saving up for the value of that car when you get there. And if you're financing it, it's over a longer period of time, so you're not going to have to save as much either on that front. So what happens at that point is the same thing that has happened for our capital improvement program, which is if we push out or delay a project, then it means that we don't have to save as much for that project year over year, month over month. It comes at a cost, of course, in the -- that we're not doing some of the beautification projects and some of the other things that would be really nice to have, but fortunately, because of the planning ahead, we're doing all of the need to have. I need to explain that, because the less you have to transfer over, the less you have to spend out of your general fund. And so as we're doing -- as we're looking at this, it's important to have the difference -- understanding of the difference between the operating revenues and total uses. So what you can see out of our general fund sources and uses, our general fund operating revenue is $199, which is $1 million, which is down $30 million from our actual from two years ago. And that's, of course, very substantial. You look at some of our other cities around us, and they're going through pretty difficult times as well. I know our neighbor in Costa Mesa has a $150 million general fund revenue -- our general fund budget, and they're looking at almost the exact same amount of cut, down about $30 million, which is substantial. And so when you're looking at -- and so when we're looking at trying to figure out how much do we need to get to bridge, it's important that you're paying attention to the total sources and total uses. So when you go down to the total uses of $253 million and the unrestricted resources, you realize, okay, so we need to come up -- we need to find either $33 million in additional revenue or $33 million in expenditure reduction. And we're finding that in the expenditure reduction. So why don't we go to the next slide? And so it's important to see, this is how you bridge $33.2 million. This is why we have these tiers set up, and this is why we're able to make the ends meet that we are planning on this year, keeping in mind that, at least the estimates and our views, our view is that the estimates of the revenue reduction are fairly conservative. They are -- correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, but we took our consultants' thoughts and actually went beyond them by quite a bit, because it's a whole lot better and safer to be conservative on the front end on the revenue side than to be the opposite. And so when we're looking at this total by tier, each tier, especially with the cumulative, eventually gets that 33.2. The reason that we're only needing to draw down 2.3 out of a $52 million contingency reserve is because of tier three, and that's what we were doing in the last -- in this last discussion. Finding an ability to defer capital expenditures by $20.9 million is substantial. It allows us to -- it allows us a lot more discretion. And if we end up finding that the revenue is not as markedly bad as we thought, which we will be reviewing at least quarterly, then we can -- we could bring some of the -- we can make a decision out of any of these tiers to bring some of that money back into some of those tiers. So in theory, if we're finding that the deferred capital funding and spending is -- was too aggressive, we could bring that back in if the revenue is there. But I wanted to make sure that everyone understood how and how much we needed to bridge in this, and also why, and then how we were going to do this. So these slides are supplements to what we had had at our last Finance Committee meeting. And let's go to the next one. So this slide basically takes what you just saw in that tiered slide, but actually puts it into the budget slide that you'd seen two slides ago. And that's why you're seeing -- that's why you can calculate and come to that $33 million number. And just, I'm sorry, actually, could you go back one slide real quick? And then you saw the -- and then you see -- you know what? I missed this when I was reviewing this. Isn't tier six -- tier six is the $5 million for CalPERS. Tier seven is service level cuts. Did you change that?
We decided it was a bit confusing to include the reserve balances, so we, you know, we do have a reserve for the $5 million, but it's the same net effect on the contingency reserve.
Okay. I'm just going to -- I actually, I appreciate that. I don't think it's all that confusing, so let me just say this real quick. So in between tier five and tier six, I would add in $5 million toward our pension payments. And so everyone remembers the normal cost is the default amount that we have to pay. The unfunded amount also has a default amount that we have to pay. But we also pay above and beyond the discretionary amount, so we pay discretionary amount above and beyond that. In light of the fact that we have been anticipating that there would be misses, they would not be hitting their 7% discount rate, we were also planning on setting aside an additional $5 million to go toward CalPERS this year. Let's go to this next slide. And you can see that down below the uses, it says, "Set aside PERS reserve $5 million." That's what I'm referencing, and I want to make sure I highlight that, because it's important for people to see that even in the difficult economic times that we're seeing right now, we're continuing to plan for the future. So we continue to make sure that, you know, because if you don't pay that 5%, I mean, this year, CalPERS is -- I mean, I know I asked you this a week or two ago, Dan, but CalPERS was at about 1 and 1/4% on their investment returns. And remember, they need to hit 7. So you dropped down 5 and 3/4, if it ended today. You'd drop down, or at least two weeks ago, I should say, you're down 5 and 3/4, which means that our UAL will increase 5 and 3/4, just like everyone else's. The difference being, of course, that -- and that's why, by the way, you look to your contingency reserve first before you would go towards something like the $5 million UAL, because the contingency reserve is earning probably about a buck and a quarter also, a point and a quarter.
So new money would be only 1/4%, but our existing portfolio is yielding about 2%.
Okay. So new money -- so, okay, I see what you're saying. But even that, so you're now comparing a loss of 2% versus a loss of 5 and 3/4%, at least over a one-year period. So it's very expensive to give up that discretionary amount. We're fortunate that we can continue to do that, but if we found that we needed to draw down on the contingency reserve, we would need to make a decision as a council on how much we would be willing to draw down on the contingency reserve before we would be willing to take that $5 million out of the transfer to PERS. So I want to highlight all this, because it is complicated. It's perhaps more complicated this year, because everything is more complicated this year. But I wanted to highlight this, because it's -- it is important to understand how we're making the decisions up here, that -- because every meeting we have, and we've been having for a while now, you're seeing playing out in this discussion we're having in a way that just we haven't dealt with before, but it's important to understand. So I know we had -- we were kind of wrestling with this at the last Finance Committee meeting, which is why I wanted to spend a few minutes just making sure we didn't overview. Now, I spoke for a while there, Dan. Is there anything you'd like to kind of clarify? Did I say anything? Because part of it is, I'm talking out loud to make sure I understand it, too. So if I missed it, anything, let me know.
Of course, there's a lot of minutia, but I think you hit all the big points, the major points.
Okay. Yeah. Let's not do the minutia, then. All right. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Let me stop. Are there any questions on these last three slides? Yeah. Because I want to make -- this is important, so I want to stop. All right. Ms. Dixon.
Well, just to clarify, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dan, given our reduction in revenues that we're contemplating, what are -- at the $50 million reserve level, what percentage of our revenues, our general fund revenues is at?
So our policy is based on operating expenditures, less our discretionary payments to PERS, times 25%, so we're at about 24% right now.
So that is --
Of our target policy.
That is remarkable, that we are maintaining that, given many cities, as the mayor mentioned, are going through severe contraction and digging deep into their reserves. So it's certainly a tribute and credit to our conservative fiduciary governance. So thank you.
Okay.
So revenues, here's an overall snapshot, and you can see, especially if you focus on the total general fund numbers, you can see as the numbers drifted, so it was 229. Prior to the 20 -- the 1920 revised budget, it was in the 230 range, and then we were expecting in January, the next year, at that pace, we'd be up to $240 million. So by the time we get to 2021, all of a sudden, we, between the two years, we're seeing almost a $40 million shortfall, some of which we absorbed in the 1920 budget already. If you recall, we had a $13 million revenue reduction in the previous budget, and we're carrying a substantial amount of surplus forward to the next year. So where -- so property taxes lag behind economic distress. We're still seeing the residential market, which makes up 80% of our property tax revenue, doing still extremely well. The other thing to point out is the valuation date that the assessor uses for property tax increases is January 1. So that was, of course, pre-COVID, but it's heartwarming to see even post-COVID, that because of the low demand of coastal community property, that our residential property home sales are slowing, because I think there's reduced activity, but they're still holding their value, which is, I think, another testament to the good governance that we have, maintaining our infrastructure, et cetera. Sales tax is another story. So we're introducing a essentially 16% lower than an already bad year in 1920. Recall that the fourth quarter, fourth fiscal quarter of this year is likely going to be extremely bad for sales tax. And as we start into January 1, or start with July 1, we're expecting another 16.6% reduction over an already impaired number. Transient occupancy tax is taking a substantial hit, and we phased that in over four quarters, and what you're looking at is a blended rate. I won't go through the minutia. We covered that in Finance Committee about transient occupancy tax, but, you know, the truth is, nobody really knows how long this impact is going to take place. You know, when will the airlines be back? When will people feel comfortable taking air, you know, an air flight? So we will be taking frequent visits of our budget throughout the year and making adjustments as we go along.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
My request to speak doesn't work over here.
I'll pay more attention then.
No, no, it doesn't work anyways. So I'll just wave. On the property tax, when will we begin to sense, without waiting two years, if there are assessed valuation changes and reexaminations? Point number one. And point number two, given the ballot measure on the November ballot for the split role, what kind of impact that would have?
We're making no assumptions based on the split role. We're staying neutral there, and we'll see what happens. We will know if our assessed value increased at the rate that we're looking at, starting end of July, end of June, early July, we'll know whether or not we have to backpedal on our property tax estimate, but I don't think we will.
What do you -- what about residential, but commercial? Do you see a sense that commercial may be looking at their assessed values?
Well, so certainly, the commercial will be quick to the punch to ask for what's called a Prop 8 reduction to their property values. On the commercial real estate, with the leases being reduced, and we may very well see a reduction in some of our commercial real estate. I think that will happen over time, number one. And recall that the commercial property only represents about 20% of our total assessed valuation.
Okay.
So on the expenditure side, rather than giving you the traditional department structure, we gave you the -- a view based on the expenditure categories. And again, if you look at the trend over time, so the actual for 1819, the actual's always deceiving, because remember, that doesn't usually consider vacancies, and there are, so -- or that actually, that includes the vacancies that were realized, as well as any M&amp;O or our operating savings that the departments realize. So when we jump to 2019, there are always -- so on a budgetary basis, there's always a bit of a jump. Again, when we started this process, we were assuming that we were going to build a budget around $230 million worth of operating expenditures. But for 2021, there were some mandatory -- outside of those mandatory increases that were either required by legislation or have-to-do projects, our proposed budget, operating budget is at $219 million.
So another way of saying that, just to be clear, is the reason 1819 looks low is only because we always budget to 100% of staffing, and we never actually do 100% of staffing. So any savings we have is shown in the actual, but we always, in a starting projection, always it's higher, because we, like I said, we budget to 100%. And it's probably worth noting that, because a number of -- there are a lot of cities that are able to balance or try to balance their budgets by reducing the percentage, so they'll have, let's say they have 100 positions planned for, but they project that, oh, we'll only fill 96 of them. Well, you can reduce your budget by quite a bit, by only planning for 96, or even 90% of your salaried positions. We always do it 100, and then that's one of the reasons we come in as surplus, or used to. But it's -- I like to point this out, because we don't play budget gimmicks in this city, and it's worth reminding people that this is one of the reasons we're going to be okay coming out of this. Go ahead, Dan.
Before I move on, are there any further questions?
Yeah, I have one. Dan, take utilities. You got almost a $3 million savings up there. How do you estimate that? How do you come up with that figure?
So utilities is, for the most part, electrical, and sometimes that has to do with changes -- I was sorry, this is only general fund. But usually, so in analyzing what has been used for streetlights, I was thinking there is a significant amount of utilities that are utilized by our Water Enterprise Fund, but in the general fund, it's mostly streetlights and building. So when looking over a three-year trend, we noticed that we weren't utilizing the budget. So we went back to departments and asked where we can cut operational savings and pointed out some areas that were underspending. This isn't consistent year by year. Sometimes there are things that, for one, for no particular reason, you know, projects either got slowed down, but -- or the main thing is, departments were able -- we were able to identify accounts that had a history of underspending, and this is how we came -- we went back to the departments who verified it and came back with 4.7 million of savings.
Thank you.
Any other? Okay. Go ahead.
Trying to lose my clicker. Oh, did it work? Okay. So there were other funds impacted by COVID, so in Thailand, with the volatility in the markets, as well as the, in particular, the price of oil, we're anticipating a shortfall in Thailand on our sale of oil of about $354 million. And our Thailand Capital Fund In our Thailand's capital fund, we have a number of leases.
Thousand, just to be clear.
Oh, okay, sorry, three hundred and fifty-four thousand. As, and in the Thailand's capital fund, all in is about seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand there. Gas tax, we saw some minor reductions due to the reduced fuel consumption. Same thing with Mezuram. And the water, wastewater, due to, do some regulatory changes, there may be some additional delinquencies associated with water and wastewater. And unfortunately, it will be a little bit, it will be more difficult to chase down delinquencies in water and wastewater due to, due to a new executive order that came out of the government, governor's office. So program enhancements, I'm going to turn to City Manager Grace Leng to, to speak to those.
Nope.
Hello, oh, there I am. Okay, all right. So in looking at preparing this budget, we actually sort of had two phases of it. Because if you think about COVID, it, the impacts really started hitting in March quite forcefully, you know, suddenly and abruptly. And before that time, for several months, we had been preparing the next year's budget. And as Dan had mentioned earlier, we were looking at some additional revenue increases. So we were looking to areas where if it made sense to put some enhancements in, we started to move forward with that. But then with COVID hitting, we, we went back and re-looked at the budget again under the new revenue assumption. So what you see here are really some modest areas that we wanted to make sure we had coverage for with some of the changing environments that are occurring. So for example, in the harbor department, we had had a code enforcement supervisor on loan from the community development department. We made that permanent for this ongoing basis, at least. It made a lot of sense with the, the work that's being done over in, in the harbor department and with the Title seventeen updates and the map update to occur next, that we really wanted to be sure we had the appropriate resources in that department to make sure we could run a robust program there with the new regulations. And that is also why we do have in here some part-time employees. Because with the Title seventeen update now in place, we want to make sure we can implement that in, in an appropriate manner. I will say, before the, the COVID revenue impacts had hit, I was looking at proposing an additional full-time code enforcement technician position. And at this point, just because of the, the financial situation, there's a hold on that. But I will be, we'll be looking at that perhaps when the, the resources come back there. Under the public work side, this is particularly for part-time employees related around our new recycling mandates that are coming from the state, requires a lot more inspections and work that we have to do with our commercial businesses. So this particularly supports that program there to add for the, the work that's needed there. And then our utility department, there were some critical equipment needs that we needed. And as you'll note, that initial one is, is one time. And that second bullet item on street sweeping, as you recall, we have a new street sweeping contract in place that after having a ten-year contract with the previous street sweeping vendor, we did have an increase in that. So we needed to make sure we accommodated that in this budget. So there's, those are the main program enhancements outside of some of the required ones that are needed. For example, new overtime laws and changes went into effect that we needed to make sure we budgeted for appropriately there. And some premiums for like our general liability insurance based on actuarial valuations. And that's what basically, what we have in this budget. I know the finance director was, we were talking before about, I'm used to in this budget presentation, talking about all the types of enhancements and additional services we can provide here. And that's not this kind of budget this time around. So go on to the next slide here on the staffing levels. You can see there, there are two additional positions that went into effect in this current fiscal year. And if you recall, one was a conversion of contract to full-time for our streetlight program, where it made more financial sense to do that conversion there. And then one police officer in that budget. But then we held flat with the total number of employees in this budget. And I'll also note on that piece, we, we are very mindful. We, we held our staff positions here to ensure that we continue providing services. And that's really important for us, to maintain services the best we can through, through all of this. And I don't think that's going to be the case in, in many cities, unfortunately. But we're really conscientious about holding service levels and really looking to protect that for our community. Next slide, did you want to touch in on this one, Dan?
Sure, yeah. So as the mayor mentioned, we did cut back on funding a number of capital improvements. However, I, I wanted to make sure that we, that people understood that we are still maintaining our effort to maintain our critical capital infrastructure so that infrastructure maintenance carries on. And as an example, you can see that we're investing quite a bit in, in facilities. We're moving forward with assessment districts. We have a number of improvements to the harbor parks and beaches. We're keeping up our effort on streets and storm drains. And you see a significant capital improvement program in the water enterprise fund.
That's probably worth mentioning. If you want to see where all of the money comes from, very, not, a smaller percentage of it comes from the general fund. So you can go into the capital improvement program that is on our website at NewportBeachCA.gov. You can go into the budget section, and you'll find the capital improvement budget. And you'll see the breakdown and how we spend the money. So a lot of this comes out of designated restricted funds. And the water is a great, water and wastewater are great examples of enterprise funds where you have to spend the money, you're getting in on only the provision of services, which is in large part the CIP. So just wanted to make sure folks were looking at this and seeing a fairly large number and realizing where, where a lot of that funding comes from. Go ahead, Dan.
Okay, so this is really a repeat of what you decided at the, the last council meeting.
And we're going to keep this at a high level so we don't have to go into individual projects and talk conflicts. So just keep it at a high level.
Right, this is just to provide the review for what the actions that were taken. So you can see by the column what was returned to fund balance, what is continuing for this next year. And there were adjustments made based on the, the decisions council made. And then what particularly is being deferred out into not this upcoming budget, but the year after that, which really enabled us, again, in that tier three, to close our budget gap. There's one I do want to highlight, though, the facilities maintenance master plan dollar amount. That includes funds that we need to address infrastructure in our city facilities, in particular, our police building. So that, we have adjusted since you last saw that. So this has deferrals, but we kept what we needed to continue on that maintenance plan there. But everything else lines in with what council's direction has been here. And again, we weren't intending to go over project by project here. There are, the yellow highlights show you where there are conflicts if we do, if any council member wants to talk to these. But this was just to provide you the summary of the, the CIP program.
All right, Ms. Dixon.
Based on our experience at the beach for the last several weekends and the enhanced visitor population that we're experiencing, it occurs to me the Balboa Village enhanced maintenance, I mean, I know Public Works is already enhancing the maintenance on a daily basis. So will we can, will we continue that existing service level?
Yes, yes, we will.
All right, thank you.
And I'll just, on the next slide, shows all the projects. You can see the ones that have been deferred out past this current, this upcoming budget year into the year after that. So this is where really, really assisted us in, in that budget gap, the decisions that council made.
Okay.
So the last remaining slide just talks about the next budget milestone. So we have a Finance Committee, potentially on Thursday, June fourth, to develop kind of, the Finance Committee's written comments on the city's, city manager's proposed budget for two thousand twenty-one. But that could be handled in a number of different ways, I think. So, but right now, it's scheduled for June fourth. And on June ninth is when we are scheduled to put before council the full city council budget adoption and the GAN limit appropriation limit. And then November, we would, I mean, of course, staff will be working over the summer on, on monitoring these results. But then we'll come back in November and start reviewing, you know, how did the summer season turn out? What do we see looking forward? What's the world, world look like on the other end? But with that, I'll open up to, to questions if anyone has.
All right, so do we have any questions on the presentation we've just seen? Okay, so this is a joint meeting of the Finance Committee and the City Council. So a couple of quick comments before I open it up to any of our Finance Committee members that would like to speak. Quick reminder to the general public who are watching that our Finance Committee is comprised of three council members and four citizen members. The four citizen members are chosen by the individual council members who are not on the Finance Committee and then put up for approval at the, by the City Council themselves. So we have four Finance Committee members. And just like to say to all four of them, four, I said citizen members, yes, four, thank you. I mean, we've, you've been instrumental in putting forward budgets over the last few years that have prepared us for a really tough budget season this year. And you've gone through the tough budget season with us right now. And we're seeing a lot of work being done. To our, to all of our folks on staff in the Finance Department, same comments can be said. You're living through something that we don't want to be living through, but you're doing it in a way that is preparing us for a way, preparing our, the members of our public to continue to receive the services that they expect, at levels that they expect. And that is a, that's a big deal as we're moving forward with this. I think we all should continue to be mindful that this is not a sustainable budget path. This is essentially a one-year budget path that if we find ourselves in a continuing decline of this magnitude a year from now, will result in those service cuts that we are trying to avoid so desperately this year. Because then we're going to be making really difficult decisions on capital improvement, and then we're looking at service cuts. But for the coming year at least, we, we are in, I would say, better shape than most of our fellow, fellow cities, especially as I spend a lot more time talking to mayors around us in the, in these days. So I just want to say to our staff and to our citizen members in particular, thank you for the hard work that you've been putting in. For our citizen members, no pressure, but if you would like to say anything, you're more than welcome to. If you'd like to ask any questions, you're welcome to as well. Okay, I appreciate the brevity. So with that, I'll come back. Any other questions? No, all right. So we'll go out to public comment on this item.
So land Finance Committee, this is Jim Mojer speaking from the community room. The agenda for this meeting contains a link to a two hundred and fourteen-page budget detail book. I seem to recall in some past years, not all, but some, the budget book contained in it a letter of transmittal from the city manager that provided the community with some context for what they were seeing in that detailed book, which otherwise is just a bunch of accounting that doesn't make a whole lot of sense to a whole lot of people. I think adding a letter of transmittal to the book this year especially would be helpful. In that book, without further guidance, the public sees a page, which is page thirty-three, shows total revenue, it says, for all city funds. And a page forty-one that shows the expenses for, it says, all city funds. It appears that the expenses exceed the revenues by about twenty-nine million dollars. We've heard a lot of very complicated talk this afternoon, kind of obfuscated what is happening. Doesn't the fact that the expenditures exceed the revenues for the city as a whole mean that there is some kind of deficit for this year? More importantly, we've heard about tiered reductions and so forth. Are those reductions reflected in the budget book that the public has been provided a link to? Or is the public somehow going to see those through the document called the Proposed Budget Revision? So reading the budget book is not really the proposal? The proposal is the book plus the revisions? Or is the book the proposal? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any call-ins? Nope, okay. So we'll come back. So Mr. Mojer's referencing the total all-city funds net of internal premiums at two seventy-five point three. The total all-city operations net of internal charges is three oh four point five. Do you want to talk to that, Dan?
Sure, so when we get outside of the, the general fund, which is mainly your operating fund, includes a lot of capital resources that we're saving up over time. You could think about gas tax. We receive money over a number of years, and then we spend that down in the terms of, of capital projects. The same is true, you'll see a big expenditure in, in the, in the water fund coming up, where we're accumulating, accumulating resources, and then we'll, we'll make a capital investment. So there's no getting around that. When you save up, even in your checking account or in your car example, your checking account balance goes up by the forty thousand. When you buy that vehicle, then it, then it's going to go down.
Okay. Any other questions on this item? Okay, seen none. Let's go to item number two then. So item number two is the discussion about fees.
Great, good afternoon, Mayor O'Neil, members of the council, members of the Finance Committee. My name is Teresa Schweitzer. I'm a senior accountant with the Revenue Division of the Finance Department. And I'm here today to look for direction on our latest fee study update. Council policy directs us to establish cost recovery targets to annually adjust our fees in order to ensure that they're meeting those targets. Newport Beach Municipal Code three point three six mandates a hundred percent cost recovery unless subsidized and states that cost studies should be conducted at least every five years. The department studied this round were community development, fire, and police. Both CDD and police were last comprehensively studied in two thousand fifteen. So here we have a timeline showing the fee study process, an outreach to the community. It's a dense slide, but what is important to point out is we brought the fee study updates to Finance Committee on February thirteenth. We provided building-related changes to the Building Industry Association, the OC chapter, on February fourteenth. And we sent multiple interested party notification letters. And we published the public hearing notice and the daily pilot multiple times. Here we have a summary of the fee study changes, ultimately resulting in eight hundred and forty thousand dollars of potential annual revenue. This does not account for fees where volume statistics were not available, which the volume statistics were gathered in the fall of two thousand nineteen. And also, this doesn't take into account where demand may decrease due to COVID nineteen.
So just to be clear, let's go back to the slide. So when we, when we're talking about an impact of eight hundred and forty thousand in annual revenue, the way that our fee studies work is that we look to a hundred percent of the, the cost of a particular action. So if you go in, the cost of getting a plan check is, we, we are, we're not profiting by, by it. We're spending, we're trying to recover only the amount of cost directly attributable to a specific action, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so when we're talking about a hundred, eight hundred and forty thousand in annual revenue, what we're really saying is eight hundred and forty- saying is 840,000 in annual revenue, but we also anticipate an additional 840,000 in additional costs as well. So the annual revenue is supposed to offset the additional costs.
Right, for anything that's not subsidized, yes.
So, so in this case, when we're, so in this case, what we're saying then is we anticipate the increase of 840,000 in expenditures. And the, and the cost study is showing what we would have to increase in order to offset that in our budget, essentially minus, you know, whatever subsidies we would be willing to give. Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure I understood that. Go ahead.
And can I just make a quick, follow-up to your comments, Mr. Mayor? Just to be clear, just mainly for the people listening and watching, that the Municipal Code, the Newport Beach Municipal Code mandates 100% cost recovery. There's no profit in any sense. That's why we do the, we hire an outside third-party consultant to identify every step of the cost to perform a service, which is a discretionary service, not a mandated service.
Yes, that is correct.
And, and so this, the precise fee that is assigned to that service is the cost of the city providing that service and not a penny more?
That is correct. Yes. And we do have a consultant, it's MGT of America. They do our fee study each year. And we base the fee study off of the budget, the budgeted expenditures.
And the state law prohibits a fee that would incur a profit?
Correct.
Right. And the, and yeah, to follow up on that, I mean, the whole point of this is because if, if you, if you have that 840,000 expenditures, but you don't offset it at all with, with any fee increases, you end up having to backfill that 840 using general fund money, essentially tax money that someone else is paying on sales tax or property tax or TOT or something else. And so if your neighbor's going through a construction project and they're not paying their full freight on the, the cost of the service, of the, you know, the plan checks and whatnot, you're paying for your neighbors, you're, you're helping to pay for your neighbor's construction project through your own sales tax revenue. Or, not revenue, but when you pay your own sales tax. Mr. Erdman, did you have something?
Yeah, what's an example of a, a fee where, that involves volume statistics? Give me, give me an example of that, please.
The volume statistics really just help us to estimate the revenue. So we calculate the fee kind of from a bottom up where we meet with the departments and we say, okay, for a plan check, you know, how much time does it take? Which staff participate? And how much do the staff make? You have your benefits and your overhead. And then you come up with an hourly rate for that fee. And then you apply that hourly rate to how much time it takes to complete the service. And then that gives us the total cost. And then what we do, the volume statistics, is then we take that total cost and then we calculate it to how many times we do it to then estimate how much money we're going to recover.
Okay, thank you. How many times you're going to perform that service?
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Duffield and then Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you, Mayor. So are you involved in the Thailand fee increases as well?
The, I guess, which one specifically? So.
We took over the management of the mooring fields. And we've incurred higher costs to do that. Do we have a plan for going back and analyzing what we need to do to raise the fees to pay for that?
The harbor department is actually next on the study. We would study them next year.
Thank you.
Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. I think we've done one every year I've been on council. You said we, we do one every year, a study?
Yes.
And who do we hire for that?
MGT of America.
What do they cost us every time they do it? Do you know what they charge?
I think this last fee study was around $30,000. That was for CDD, police, and fire.
So according to Newport Beach Municipal Code 3.36010, cost studies should be conducted at least every five years. So if we do it every year instead, we're looking at spending four years' extra expense of about.
Now, we.
Hundred and twenty-ish.
We have a, we study everyone.
Hey, hang on one second. It's okay, he's going to finish his thought.
Sorry.
Are you an employee of the city or do you, are you a contract?
I'm an employee of the city.
Okay. So we have also your salary as well, but we're looking at basically spending 30, 120 extra just so we get every little penny out of every little thing. Now, what's interesting is that every year taxpayers can expect fixed costs in TOT and sales tax and property, property taxes. Those are going to the government no matter what. Even if your neighbor pulls a permit and they get an extra $2 subsidy arguably from your taxes, those are sunk costs. So I'm, you know, people know how I feel about these anyways, there's always way more increases than decreases in the fees. But this is a great year to, to continue the matter, probably for two years, because we're seeing expenses are going to increase and the economy is going to be drastically hurt. I'm a little disappointed that there's almost like an autopilot from staff and expectation. This is something that's done every year, even though it's asked for every five years, and that this is something that must be done. There is no law that says every single penny that's spent on time to service our residents must be accounted for. There is a law that says that you should, you shall not exceed the actual cost. That's in order to protect the taxpayer. But I think these fee studies are not necessary. I think right now they're especially not. Those are my thoughts, since we're giving thoughts. Thank you.
Okay. I think I know what you're about to say, though. The, the fee studies that we conduct annually, do they address every fee in the city or are they staggered over the five-year period?
They're staggered.
So these, the last time we were looking at these particular fees was about five years ago? And then the ones we looked at last year have been considered six years ago, basically? Like it's a five-year rotation on various fees?
Three to five years. We schedule each of the departments out every three years so that if things push us out longer, we can still meet that steady every-five-year requirement.
Got it, okay. So our, our request to speak button seems to not be working, so I'm just going to look over. Okay, Mr. Avery.
So CCC, CDD just reflects the enormous amount of construction in town, is that right?
Any of the building and planning related fees.
Yeah, yeah. I've been a frequent victim of CDD fees. And, but it's, what goes on in that department is amazing. And, and these are individuals who are, you know, rebuilding their homes or building new homes. And it's a great thing. And I just think that staff is under tremendous pressure all the time to keep up with it. And we've added part-time and, and we've added independent contractors to just keep up with the pace. It's absolutely staggering. And I think it's, it's important to recognize that and to see, you know, obviously big numbers here from that department. And just looking around this town, it's, it's really something. So I, I don't like paying the fees like anyone else, but at the same time, it's an enormous cost to, to manage these construction projects, or not manage them, but at least keep, you know, respond to residents' requests for plan check and for keeping their projects moving and building, protecting all the neighbors and all the rest of us from, you know, having any issues with construction. So we're, got an incredible community and I think part of that is the fact that we have such a good community development department and we're asking residents to pay their fair share to make that happen. So we have the right oversight and it results in the kind of homes you see all over town and it results in a lot of public safety. So I think it's great. Thank you.
Okay, I'll look around real quick, just, okay. All right, go ahead.
All right, so there are three options that we are presenting to you today. And in the next few slides, we will go into the impacts and the pros and cons of each. The first option and staff recommendation is that we bring the fee study updates to the next council meeting on June 9th for public hearing and potential adoption. This would result in a positive revenue impact and ensures we remain on schedule for annual updates as well as continue charging full cost of service. The second option is we postpone the fee study updates to a date to be determined and allow the scheduled CPI increases to go into effect July 1st. With this option, there's a significant hit to our revenues, including our fiscal 21 budget. But we would still remain on schedule with annual updates and it would only be temporary. The third option is we do not approve the latest fee study updates and rescind Resolution 201855, which authorizes the annual CPI increases. This has the largest impact to our revenues and takes us off schedule for annual updates, essentially waiving council policy. For your time.
All right. We have any thoughts on this? I'm, I think I'm going to just say overall that it comes back to what I was just saying. We, we're, the, the issue here is we're spending, we would be spending this much money. And so we just saw that we needed to make up $33 million. I, I think it'd be just wholly irresponsible to try to make up another $1 million out of this. I mean, that's, what we'd be doing is we'd be drawing down our reserves at this point to, to make sure that people don't have to pay a little bit extra on their plan checks. I just, that's just, it's untenable to me to even contemplate the idea of going down an additional $1 million on our reserves over a fee issue. So I think we ought to be bringing it back. Mr. Muldoon.
Last council meeting, the one before, I voted against two items that were over $2 million for paving roads that were well-paved, no potholes. So no one's asking to go into the reserves, we're trying to tighten the belts. Now is a time to be wise with our own money, but also not to try to take more money from, from the residents, from the ratepayers. The buck stops here. And if a million dollars is something you think we shouldn't take out of the reserves and there's the $4 million that we voted on the last two council meetings that easily would have offset that.
So with due respect to that comment, those were not general fund monies. Those are restricted fund monies and they didn't come out of the general fund contingency reserve. They came out of money that had been saved up from restricted funds, oftentimes coming from state and federal governments through gas tax money, Measure M money. Those were different. That's, so I want to make sure I'm talking about restricted funds versus general fund at this point, because we're talking about general fund on this fee study issue. Any other discussion on this? Ms. Dixon?
Yes, I've looked at these fees for as long as I've been on the council and remain convinced that they're discretionary by the person, the resident who pays the fees or the non-resident who's doing a project in the city, property owner, that it's discretionary. One does not have to remodel their home or, there are many different ones. I don't know, I remember a few years ago, is the police department fees, well, we will see when we see it, because we haven't seen the whole list. Are they part of this review?
Yeah.
Because the last time, which was, I guess, five years ago, one license for the animal control department underneath the police department, one license modification to increase the fee for pot-bellied pigs. Literally, that's a line item, at least it was five years ago, increasing the site visit to the property owner to look at their pot-bellied pig. And I thought, why should I pay that cost if we do not increase that fee to that owner of the pot-bellied pig? Why should I pay for that cost of the service of that onsite inspection? So these are discretionary services that the city provides for, as needed by a resident, a property owner who wants those services provided. And that's discretionary and so my opinion is they should pay for those fees. I think granted, in this difficult time, it works both ways. I mean, it's difficult, we're going to be, we're very close to reserves right now. Our reserves are actually $2 million under. We have to look at every opportunity that's fair. This, in my opinion, this is fair and it's the right thing to do. And our municipal code requires that we cost, charge only those fee amounts that is for the cost of delivering that exceptional service that the city is known to provide. So I will support bringing it back.
Mr. Avery?
Yeah, I move that we bring the fee study updates to council on June 9th.
Sorry, just one second. So we're just going to do a straw vote, so it's not an action item, but we'll, we'll take the, I appreciate that. We need to go public comment, though. Any other comments before we do that? Okay. All right, we'll go out to public comment on this item.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, and Finance Committee. This is Jim Mosher again. Just, just for clarification, item with this title, the fee study update, whether to approve it or not, has been continued from several meetings. It was first seen by the City Council back on March 24th. Should the item come back on June 9th so that the public has a little forewarning of what's being proposed or what you're actually debating today? Is, is the fee schedule that would come back potentially on June 9th the same that was presented on March 24th? Or has city staff come up with a different fee schedule that they are now proposing? Thank you.
Thank you. Any calls? All right, we have one call. All right, go ahead.
Hey, what up, council? I'm JP Carr. Did Chad already speak?
Go ahead with your public comment.
Um, okay, so I will take that as an affirmative. Thank you. Chad just hit the nail right on the head and fired me up. He's absolutely right. We are in a pandemic and Tom Cruise is the hero we need right now. Let me be vulnerable for a sec. This pandemic has scared me. And Chad says that's okay. But growing up, I didn't get scared of stuff like this. I was only scared of report cards and intimacy. But in general, I was like death in the face. Like rip on a dirt bike, roll down a steep hill with my body limp, or moon traffic. And it always fired people up. As I've aged, I've noticed that I don't push it as hard. I worry up off my head. One person who sharpens my edge, though, is Tom Cruise. When I watch his behind-the-scenes training for collateral, I suddenly forget what fear is and I take charge and hustle to a busy intersection to moon people. I feel whole again. This may sound frivolous, but there is power in letting a rip, council. In these times more than ever, we need someone to fill our hearts with courage. A symbol that says even if we're stuck inside, a determined human will go farther than any other actor would dare. My mom is from Colombia. When I came downstairs this morning for breakfast and told her about our plan for the space station, she mentioned Tom Cruise is huge in her homeland and the world over. This is extra huge because China and the US are beefing. Our mutual love of Tom could tell that. Maybe one day Hong Kong's own adventurer sets the end. Jackie Chan will go to space and we can name something after him. That is why we need to name the space station the Tom Cruise Space Station. Let's give this world something to look up to. And I'm sorry I couldn't afford to support you out in person, but I just didn't want to risk it, my momma said. I'd also like to sing a song that always fires me up, council, that I think you guys will really enjoy. Three little birds sat on my window and they told me I don't need to worry. Summer came like cinnamon, so sweet. Little girls double dutch on the concrete. Maybe sometimes we got it wrong, but it's all right. The more things seem to change, the more stay the same. Oh, don't you hesitate. Girl, put your records on. Tell me your favorite song.
Okay, that's enough.
So ahead, put your hair down.
That was awesome. All right, so is Chad on the line? Good. All right, so we'll come back to council and find a way to charge a fee on that next time. So anyway, we'll, so the, the options that are available, coming back to council, the options that are available, one, two, and three. Given what I had said, I'm going to put a straw poll out on one, two, and three. If you, number one is bring this back for June 9th. Number one is bring this back for June 9th, 2020. The other, the second, is postpone fee study updates but allow CPI adjustments. And the third is do not approve the fee study updates. So, everyone in favor of number one, if you wouldn't mind raising your hand?
With Councilmember Muldoon voting no.
Well, hang on. I'm going to... I'll poll all three.
Okay.
Number two? Nothing? And number three?
No votes for option two.
And then, option three?
I'm with Chad.
All right.
Councilmember Muldoon supports option three.
Okay. All right.
Mayor?
Yes.
And I just want to note, and I'll verify with Teresa, the fee schedule that was presented in the earlier months that we held till now, it's the same fee schedule. No changes.
It is the same. It's just the... The only difference is the implementation dates are different. Push out.
Understood. Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. So, we'll now go to public comment on non-agenda items. Do we have any public... Oh. Is that Chad coming up?
What up, council? It is Chad. Shout out to JT. That was a great song. And yeah, what up, council? My name is Chad Kroeger. I'm an activist in Stoke, Lord. I come to you in the gnarliest of times. I don't know if you looked outside, but it's pretty nuts. There's something called a pandemic going on. When the Q team first happened, I managed to stay stoked. I didn't have to work, and the president gave me 1,200 bones. But then, it started to kind of suck. The beaches closed. My buddy Dolan's GF broke up with him over his Call of Duty addiction, and J.Crew went bankrupt. His deleterious to my tan, my bro's love life, and my summer shirt collection. I was ready to throw in the towel and let Rona sadness take over my body. But then, something incredible happened. They announced Tom Cruise was making his next movie in space. As soon as I heard this news, I called my long-lost love, Lindsay Swerballis, and wished her all the best in her future endeavors. She said, thanks. But back to Tom. He's not just an actor. He's something else. In a time when most bros are trapped indoors, this dude is going to the ionosphere. He's still crushing it 24/7 and observing the ultimate form of social distancing. He's such a beast. He's made us realize that there's nothing the C-virus or anything can do to stop human beings from persevering to the greatest of heights and accomplishments. And this is why we need to honor this maverick. How do we do that? We do it by renaming the International Space Station the Tom Cruise Space Station. Let this image enter your domes, council. We got Tom in space, in his suit, memorizing his lines. And what does he see? Tom freaking Cruise in big, bold letters on the side. That will inspire him to make a better performance, which will make a better movie, which will lead to a happier planet. And just on a side note, I think that a stoked Tom Cruise will bring the Earth's vibrations back to an equilibrium, which is pretty epic. So, yeah, we can do this, America. All it takes is a rocket and some paint. It's now in your hands, City of Newport Beach. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments on non-agenda items? All right. Then, we will stand adjourned from this special meeting. And, yep, when we switch over. So, we'll take a five-minute break, and then, we'll start our regular meeting in closed session. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I didn't... Yep. I'm sorry. I apologize. Yeah. No, no, no. We'll continue public comment. Go ahead. Oh, sorry.
I don't have Tom Cruise narrative prepared. But I would like the city's help in pushing the Newport Beach Police Department in issuing citations and towing illegally parked vehicles. So, as the first weekend of holiday visitors happened, I ended up calling the cops multiple times on Sunday with adamant refusal to issue citations when I could not access my garage. So, any help in enforcing would be appreciated.
Thank you, Mayor.
Might help with your revenue stream, too.
Make sure I... Did you send us an email earlier? I just want to make sure.
I did. Yes. I also sent one to the Chief of Police.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure if you hadn't, to make sure that you did. But got it. We received it. We'll make sure we follow up on that one.